Okay, we had decided who was going to share tonight, so I will start. So tonight is the regular May meeting of GBOS. It's May sixteenth. I'll read out a couple of statements. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees subject the Alaska Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute four dot six two dot three one zero. And Alaska Municipal Code one dot two five, public meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting standard. Conduct, call the meeting to order at seven oh one, just missed seven o'clock. Would you like to do the landing?
We'd like to. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska, whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood situated between the areas known to be the Naina and Alutik homeland respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples.
Thank you, Brian. Margaret, start if you want to. Did roll place?
Certainly, we'll start with Brianna Sullivan.
Present.
Thank you, Brian Burnett.
Present.
Jennifer Wingard.
Here.
And Mike Edgington. And noted that Kelly Okanuck is out of country.
Any disclosures people can make now or make when the item comes up? Few announcements, public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand. Personal virtually way to be acknowledged. Some discussions stay productive, please direct comments to the board rather than other members of the public. Keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. We have several work sessions coming up. We have the 2024 Budget Review tomorrow here at 2:00 P. M. We have parliamentary procedure ethics training on Monday, June the ninth, 1:00 P. M. And we have a work session on some procedures on, I believe, a day was set in June and actually this is probably the other one now, isn't it?
Yep, so Rules and Procedures is going to be on the ninth.
Ninth, yeah.
And the Ethics and Parliamentary Procedure will be on the seventeenth.
Thank you.
And we'll correct the times, but they're correct online on our website.
Right, so this is slightly out of date, but still we have a meeting on the ninth and seventeenth. Let's go into agenda revisions. I would add a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
A second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Yeah, I believe we might need to move item number ten.
Ten, yeah, that's right.
So it looks like because time is time critical, we could just move that into all business and even keep it as ten?
Yep, makes sense. Can I officially give a second?
A second.
Thank you, discussion. Okay, I'll do that by center, let's say your lines. Okay, so item ten is now in all business. We have an amended agenda. Any further discussion? I'll ask for consent. Seeing any objections, it is approved. We have three sets of minutes here that contain a motion to do them together.
I'm moved to approve minutes from April twenty first to April twenty eighth and the special meeting regarding airport parcel, et cetera.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussions? Objections? Okay, minutes are approved. There's a consent agenda, so we will proceed straight into presentations. Our staff to give a quick announcement on the revitalization, I can do that.
Don't have a lot to announce about it.
Okay. Since I'm sharing, I'll answer. Areas of responsibility stay the same. Members of GBOS stay the same, areas of responsibility stay the same. And friends are well new. The new co-chairs are Jennifer and myself. Thank you to everyone's work last year and look forward to a productive work this year. Productive year of work this year. Can we move on to legislative reports? I suspect we're not going to see members of the state because it's the last session tomorrow. Yeah, I did get a message from Kai saying he wouldn't be available. But I was also going to be here tonight. Want to have any communication, what chef? I'll just say that Kai mentioned that he asked if there were anything particular that we needed to raise with him in the last day. And I did mention, also mentioned that there will be a veto override vote tomorrow morning on the governor's veto of House Bill fifty seven, I believe, which was the education funding. Next, we'll move on to assembly members. I'm not seeing any assembly members here either. There is a assembly meeting tomorrow. Anchorage School Board, and I'm not seeing any school board members. And finally, H L B A C report, Tim sometimes provides that.
I haven't seen anything.
Okay. H L B, the H L B work plan will be in front of the assembly tomorrow. There's a public hearing and they have a meeting next weekend.
Twenty second.
On the twenty second, thank you.
And did you want to mention the work plan on the assembly?
Yes, yeah, the work plan, I think I did. The work plan is on tomorrow's agenda for public hearing at the assembly. I expect there to be an amendment, amendment which Zach had previously discussed around the disposal of the Landlord yet or tomorrow. I expect that to come up tomorrow as well. He could turn that about a few.
So Mike, what kind of public tests are going to be taking on the work?
Anything relating to the work plan.
Okay.
So the approval of work plan is one of the items to have a public hearing for tonight.
Yeah.
I don't think we have, we had a, we do have a couple of whole things. We have a letter. We don't have the resolution around it. Letter asking for changes. And we didn't, I don't think we did anything formal to say we're comfortable. Thank you. So I think if anybody wants to speak on behalf of GBOS, there is an opportunity to do that as long as what you say is consistent with the discussions we have made. Not hearing anyone jumping up. Okay, is there anything anyone wants to add on any of those topics? If not, we will move to supervisor reports. Does anyone have a supervisor report to give?
I'll start.
Thank you.
I'm Brianna Sullivan, the Fire Department Supervisor, and the Fire Board had their meeting last week and discussed budgets company. But tonight, right underway, right now, is the presentations from panel experts on YouTube about wildfire preparedness into community town hall on YouTube. Started at six thirty and goes till nine and probably won't be recorded. But for further information, wildfire munie.org for more info is right now. The rest I will say during the fire service area.
Okay.
And I'll speak on behalf of Trails Committee. And at the last meeting, we voted to not have a meeting in June and a meeting in July, which is fairly consistent with past practices. And we'll be scheduling a trail work party in June and July instead of the meeting.
Okay.
And I do not have an L U C report. It was a surprisingly short meeting.
Right, I don't have a report either. We'll move on to committee updates. If any committees want to provide an update, not seeing any offices online. So I guess what we just, what was just said is the committee updates.
We do actually have an officer online.
Oh, sorry, Crystal, I didn't see you. Didn't see you there. Crystal, go ahead, please.
No problem, just a quick update for Girdwood Housing and Economic. The, I see that you guys will be discussing an old business number eight, which we have been tracking closely in GHAC. So looking forward to that discussion. And I would also point people to the GHAC packet, which has information about the Ruane and Aliaska Highway proposed. I'm suggesting a private public partnership for development of that parcel and fifty percent of it would be dedicated to workforce housing. So if you have comments and want to proceed, provide feedback on that concept or the way, or provide feedback on the way that the concept is laid out, please get ahold of me at the next GHAC meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Please.
He's sorted.
No, it's.
Okay, thank you. See Senator Geisel there, would you like to give us an update from the legislature?
Hi, Mike. Yeah, I'm sorry I'm late. I've just had a terrible time sending on to this meeting. Technical issues, I guess. I'm going to leave my camera off. Yeah, we did on Sunday complete a budget that will be voted on tomorrow on the floor. It is a very austere budget, though we did get some behavioral health things in there, infant learning, behavioral health stuff, things like that. And a lot of money for fire prevention. In fact, it's over seventy million dollars appropriated for fire mitigation, which is a big deal to us, of course, in South Central. This afternoon, about one o'clock, the governor vetoed the education bill. So at nine o'clock tomorrow morning, we will be convening in joint session to override his veto. Because it's a piece of legislation, not an appropriation bill, we only need two thirds of the joint bodies, so forty votes to override his veto. We expect to get those forty votes. A lot of House members who previously voted against overriding him last year have heard from constituents that education is important and they want it funded. So I expect we will have possibly even more than forty votes. Vetoing, overriding his veto puts the bill in place. But the, but the seven hundred dollars per student is not, seven hundred dollar increase per student then is also in an appropriation bill, which he can reduce. And he's told us that he will reduce that amount to only five hundred dollars per student. Last year it was six eighty. He would go even below that. So we'll see what happens. It's all kind of a chess game. I don't know why he's, no one can explain his thinking on this. We did give him in this education bill expedited charter school approvals, open enrollment, the way it's done right now in schools, some extra reading money for K through six, reading assistance for kids that are needing extra assistance. A lot of those things are in the bill. So I honestly don't know what he's complaining about. But in any case, that's kind of the latest news. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? I do have two questions. One is the, if I recall correctly, part of it was dependent on another bill passing on the online taxes, the taxes from online businesses. Is that due to be, has that already been decided or is that due to be discussed tomorrow, voted on tomorrow?
The bill you're referring to is Senate Bill one thirteen, and you're correct. It taxes out of state corporations that do online sales in the state. The extra reading money, the reading assistance money, K through sixth grade is dependent on the passage or his signature on Senate Bill one thirteen. He is opposed to any new revenue at this time. And so he is saying that he will veto Senate Bill one thirteen, which provides the funding for the extra reading assistance.
Okay, but that bill itself will be, would be probably possibly voted on tomorrow.
It's already been voted on. It's been passed?
Thank you.
Yep.
I was sure, thank you. My other question is, because this is year one of the two year legislature, bills that are not, that are in process but have not been passed, do they just continue on in January?
You are correct, they continue on.
There are some others we will follow. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We will move on to our next item, which is now we'll go on to standing reports. We have, our first standing report is on proposed Girdwood developments. This table is the same as last month. There were no significant changes. And at this point, we often, if somebody is attending who is one of the developers, we often ask them to speak and we have Connie Frumore in the audience here. So I just wondered if you'd like to just talk to any of your plans. You can come up to the microphone. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I wanted to come out personally to let you know that today the municipality of Anchorage Heritage Land Bank and I, as the project manager, have gone out to bid for the off-site construction. We expect to have bids back June tenth. It's a three week, approximately a three week period of time. There are four general contractors that we have sent the bids to. We do expect hopefully to get a good bid response according to the terms and conditions that are in the development agreement. And if we are successful in getting a bid that is consistent with the cost estimate from the engineer, which is Triad, then we would be under construction this summer for the off-site improvements. And that would include the road, the sewer, the gas and the electric. And that would bring all of those offsites and the sewer utility to the property line of Holton Hills.
Okay, and the property line, can you remind us where that is? That's by the, that's on the existing water road?
Yes, yes, it's going to occur on the existing road.
Okay. I think that we heard something about the road, the road configuration being slightly different to the existing road, sort of coming in a little bit further open, is that in the plans or is that?
There were a lot, there was a lot of discussion about how that entrance was going to occur. And there finally was a decision that was made. We had to take into consideration the site triangle regulations and all of that sort of thing. So I would be happy to have the engineer post that online so that everyone can see. We are hoping for a very fast build and we're hoping for no rain because we do understand, I don't know when your school is going to start, but that is the traffic way to the school. So there will be obviously traffic control, but I believe all the major work will have been done by the time school starts.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Just really wanted to say thank you for coming down and for the update.
Oh, you're welcome.
Very nice to be.
It's a very important first phase. You can't build Holton Hills as a community and a neighborhood until you get all the utilities to it, both the deep utilities and the shower. So thank you.
Go ahead, Brett.
And again, thank you for coming down. Off of the, off of the road right there, there is a entrance to that lower or that middle Iditarod Trail. Is that trail access going to be maintained over the summer? Will we be able to recreate there? Can we cross from the Athabaskan Trail behind the school onto the, within, within recent? I'm sure there will be some, some open trenches here or there that need to.
Right, well, we're very well aware of the Athabaskan Trail and the other trail. And I was, it was interesting to note that you are not going to be meeting in June and July. So I'm wondering who it is that we should contact because we will be going on to the next phase. Not the next phase physically, but we will be wanting to have a community meeting, obviously. And we will be going to the Planning and Zoning Commission sometime in probably midsummer. And one of the committees we want to visit is obviously the Trail Committee. So if you have contacts, if you would let me know so that we can establish some conversations.
Yes, ma'am, I will reach out to you as Vice Chair of Trails Committee. I will reach out. Barb Cruz, Chair of Trails Committee is going to be back in the state in June. So we'll be able to make contact.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That was actually good segue into the last thing I was going to ask. Do you have a approximate time scale for the planned unit development application? It sounds like midsummer.
We, we have postponed it a couple of times. We felt that the offsite, all the work that we had to do to get ready for the offsite to go to bin was our first priority. We do have a team in place. We know who's going to participate with community liaison. We know who's going to give us some samples for vertical construction. We do have a plan, which is not significantly changed from the original idea that has a variety of single family duplexes and a couple of multifamily sites as well. We tweaked it far too many times, but we do have a plan that I would say is ninety percent and it's very similar. We don't have a lot of options to be very creative, really, quite frankly. The water line established what this, what Holton Hills is going to look like. And so we have to follow, follow the water line. And next to the water line will be the installation of the sewer line. And it's pretty linear. We're working with Elise Higgins, the landscape architect, to try to figure out if we have any opportunity whatsoever to be a little more creative with any, some landscaping options and that sort of thing to add a little bit of color and variety to the landscape.
So we should expect the, a community meeting before the applications?
Yes, yes, we are required to give a community meeting, obviously. But it would just be, we would try to have everything planned to present and take your comments at that time. And then it would probably be a month or so as we digest all those comments.
Right.
And maybe have some meetings and that sort of thing before we actually submit to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Once you submit to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is a P U D, Planned Unit Development with a conditional use attached to it. So they would probably want to have a work session and that sort of thing before, before the actual public hearing.
Yeah, understood. Okay, thank you. I think the often, I mean, I think you have choices, but often the the community meeting is done as part of the Land Use Committee meeting.
I'm sorry, what?
Often the community, the community meeting for these kinds of projects is done as part of our land use meetings. So if it's, if that works out, it's the second Monday of the month. That will be, that would be a very convenient time to hold it.
Let me write that down. What are those dates?
Whatever, the second Monday of the month.
It'll be June ninth, July fourteenth.
July fourteenth. All right, thank you.
And then whatever August.
That's a goal.
Yeah, okay, July, October, September. Okay, thank you.
Always reach out to me.
Okay.
Be with the dates.
All right.
In case there's anything funny going on too.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Mine was.
Okay.
Okay, unless there's any questions online? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. We have several other standing reports. GBSA non-property tax funds, I don't have an update to that. I don't know if anybody else does. Rules and Procedures revision, we will have our work session on the ninth, where some of the draft, draft changes will be presented. S T R Registration Regulation, we've shared the proposals with the administration. My understanding is there's going, there's another version of a regulatory scheme coming this month from the administration. So whatever we do is going to have to mesh with that somehow. Again, I was told it might be available in the middle of the month, but probably the end of the month. So I think the end of the month. Girdwood Comprehensive Plan, it was approved, it's adopted, it's in place. I think it's probably something we should do in the next month or two is as at least land use and possibly L U C, probably both actually, just take a look through the implementation actions that come out of that plan and just at least familiarize ourselves with those and see if there's anything we can get ahead of. I think that's it on standing reports. Does anyone have any questions, comments or things to add? Okay, we'll move on to service provider reports. Do we have a fire chief?
She's one of the guest panelists at the event.
Okay.
But she wanted to strut this Girdwood wildfire mitigation guide right in the packet. And two, one of two items that's happening in Girdwood for fire preparedness, wildfire mitigation days. So there's chipping events and public education. Chipping event is up here on the screen, it's June sixth and seventh, right at the Girdwood Park in Ryans, the location. So no logs, no construction wood, live Girdwood branches will go to Placeland Wildlife Conservation Center for the animals for live browse and wood chips will be used at the Horseverd Park. And the other item for wildfire mitigation here in Girdwood, public education, is a new user friendly website that's going live very soon with links to the burning regulations, emergency info, weather advisories and other fire stuff. So she did not have the stats that she usually had this month, but wanted to definitely put a plug for this event now and the education website.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. I will move on to police.
I don't have an updated police report. I think that Chief Ashay may be trying to join us a little bit later. I don't see that he is with us yet, though.
Okay.
We'll just keep an eye out for him.
We'll come back to that. Root and Parks.
It's us. We're busy. We've had a lot going on. Our summer staff is here, our campground host is in. We opened the campground last Friday, so people are able to come and use our tent sites. The new dugouts are getting painted as we speak. It's been crazy. We have lots of projects on the, in the, in the hopper for this year. And Kyle is out and about pretty much every day getting things rolling for those projects. So there's nothing new on that list. We heard today that our big map is ready for us to pick up. So we'll be installing that out at the five K here shortly, once we pick it up and create the mechanism to hold it. So be looking for that. It is a temporary sign. It's medium duration temporary. We're expecting that we're going to notice things that we want to fix. So it's not the final, final, final. So please don't be shy about telling us about corrections. Last week, we were really pleasantly surprised to have Clint give us a call and say he was ready to get this framework and, and new construction for a new feature for the skate park. And so all of that, oh, he is. And so the new feature was installed the last two days last weekend was open on Friday night. So things are hustling. I don't really have anything to add about grants and all the rest of that. Nothing extraordinarily exciting has been going on there. Kyle's been all over the place with roads and drainage. And I haven't read this yet, so I'm not going to pretend. The Fish Passage Culvert at Ruane, we have now heard that we have secured the funding through the EPA. So that is back up and rolling. And I think the rest of things are on target. And we have started to make a lot of headway with scheduling the meetings. Thank you. I'm sorry, I know that those doodle polls are painful. And I appreciate you taking the time to complete them so that we can kind of just plot out the summer a bit better. Any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, any questions? I'm not seeing any.
And then I wanted to advise And then I wanted to advise that I saw Andre arrive here. And so we can probably go back if he's available for the police report.
Chief Ashay, do you want to give the police report?
Sure, thank you. For this last month, the biggest change we've had was a transition of our dispatch services from Sitka Police Department to the Valdez Police Department. That transition occurred on April thirtieth, that zero eight hundred, or eight o'clock in the morning. We had some minor hiccups, but everything went smoothly so far. The only issues we're working on right now is some technical stuff on communication between two different softwares. One that Valdez is using, one that we're using. It's not affecting dispatch. It's just affecting some of the abilities on doing some searches and stuff for stats as well as that type of stuff. We're working with both our software vendors and getting that, that issue addressed. Other than that, the only thing I need to apologize for is with this transition, I wasn't able to get full stats. I had the, an idea of the breakdown in calls for service. So the Girdwood Service Area had approximately three hundred and fourteen calls for service for this last month and for April twenty twenty five, and Whittier had a hundred and thirteen calls for service. By next month's report, I'm hoping to be able to break that down into types of calls. Majority of our calls, again, are going to be calls for security checks of that nature in both communities. A couple of the issues, not issues, but after transition, we tested our landlines, both in Whittier as well as in Girdwood. All the lines went through. Girdwood is still, we're still utilizing APD for nine one one calls in Girdwood area because that's the local PSAP area for the region for Girdwood. So any nine one one calls originating out of the Girdwood would go through APD's dispatch center and then be transferred to our current dispatch center, which is Valdez. And the other calls, originally nine one one calls in the Whitty area goes directly to Valdez. The other things we did with this transition that's slightly different than previously is right now Valdez is monitoring three separate channels versus one channel where we have police and fire, police and Whittier's fire in the same channel. Now we're separate channels, separate frequencies, so separate monitoring features. Like I said, we are taking care of some minor hiccups we've had during the transition and it should be all corrected within the next thirty days, I'm hopeful. Other than that, the only other personnel changes we've had is Lieutenant Joe Corbett retired from the Whittier Police Department effective May twelfth. He has over twenty years of service in Alaska, six of it, which was with City of Whittier. Other than that, it's business as usual. We're gearing up for the summer season. We're anticipating a full staff during a forest fair as well as we had two officers assist in the graduation parade on the fifteenth. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to address them. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? I just asked, how did Slush Cup, which is one of our two big events each year? How did that, how did that go from your perspective?
It, from my perspective, it went really good. I know Aliaska had their own staff and security crews working. We had extra officers assigned during that Slush Cup weekend. We didn't have any real issues. Just a normal issues of people having a lot of fun and having an intoxicating experience here and there. But other than that, it was pretty uneventful, normal Slush Cup, nothing major.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Please, we will now move on to public comment. Persons offering public comments, please state their full name, general location. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person on subjects not listed on the agenda. Would anyone like to make a public comment? If you're online, you can just go ahead and speak. Hey, I'm not seeing any. So we will move on to old business. Item number seven, update on Girdwood Airport Parcel. I don't think we have any specific requests for action in front of us tonight. So general update is there is, we had communication with the municipality. I know the municipal manager has been meeting with, with the state attorneys and with Alaska DOT and with the leaseholder. And they have communicated with the leasehold that they are required to have a land use permit before they do any work there. As far as I'm aware, they have not submitted a land use permit. And they would also have to go through the DOT building permit process as well. That's the latest I'm aware of.
Do you know if anyone has any questions?
Yeah, please go ahead.
You receive any responses from others?
I will check the staff.
I have not seen any responses to the letter.
Not formally, not in writing.
I have one more question. I personally finally listened to the rest of the land use meeting from April. So not May, April's meeting. And it sounded like their resolution that was going to GBOS was also to ask us to suggest to the applicant to use another. Plan. And I don't, all of our editing, we definitely didn't do that. I thought a bit later after our meeting. So just a little suggestion, find another spot to. But I was just going to follow this body to ask if they got that same interpretation from the April land use meeting. It was kind of a minutia, but it was recommended to us.
So I talked with the, the community semi-formal group around that. And their feeling was that kind of that, that conversation didn't necessarily go the way they wanted to go. And so that was one of the reasons why I let it stay as is for now. And I think that that is going to depend a lot on what happens with this space. And so it kind of is a little bit, we decided we could wait to see if this list goes forward. Anyway, but, but I think that the other background to that is that the, the various lots are not equally valued by a long shot. This is a very small little discount piece. And so I don't know. Anyway. That's what ended up happening.
Thank you.
Yes.
Makes sense too.
And then I, it sounds like the, that there was some communication from Lynn Pearson, Becca Lynn Pearson, with the Muni and that she's the one handling the, talking to ADOT about it. As you said, they agree that the municipal building permitting applies to that project. But also they made a comment about that it's, they are not clear on how much helicopter impact there's going to be. And that, that has confused the neighborhood. The construction will be as a helicopter hangar, not an additional helicopter pad. But it's, in this location, a helicopter hangar is and as of you write use. So that's caused a little bit of back and forth confusion.
Yeah, and land use code, helicopter pad is a different use to, to hangar. So the hangar is permitted. I think a helicopter pad is also permitted, but there's a different process for that. So it sounds like when the municipality communicated with the, with the less, lessy, they said they were just building a hangar, but this will be clearer when they actually put an application. Is there any, is there any motion or any request for action from board? Okay. I think we've, we might monitor this for information purposes, but I think we're at the end of, the end of our steps at the moment.
Oh, do you want to move it to standing reports then?
Yes, let's put it on standing. Thank you. There's nothing more on this topic than what we'll move on to, unless anybody from the public wishes to speak on the parcel H. See, there's at least one neighbor. Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to item number eight, which is GBOS letter requesting HLV transfer. Parcel six one thirty four, HLV to Girdwood Parks Recreation. Go ahead on this.
Do you want me to take that one with a written by GHGC?
Well, I can, I can take it.
Either way.
So we have a, we have an initial draft of a, of a resolution rather than letter. I don't think we feel it's quite ready for prime time, but it's in the packet in case anyone wants to act on it. Again, my sense is this could wait a month. But we can, I will entertain any motion people want to make.
It's the one on the screen, right?
It's the one on the screen. Yes, yes. There's a couple of things we could add to it. We could change it, but I think it's probably best to, to look at it and either accept what we have or do a bit more revision and then come back next, next meeting.
Yep, sorry.
I just was going to say, I, I drafted this, not intending that we pushed this along faster than you wanted to go. I just wanted to confirm sort of the general direction. There have been a number of different approaches that GBOS has taken. I don't really know what the time sensitivity is on this. But, you know, one of the options would be that you could pass it in theory and we could receive your final draft of it and pitch it over to GBOS to take a look at. Or we could just revisit it next month. Not trying to move things faster than you want to go.
Thank you for providing a draft.
All I would say, I did not listen to the last GHGC meeting, but I would be supportive of passing this in principle and addressing revisions in the next three weeks.
So is that a motion?
I can make a motion. I didn't tell the body felt.
I will second the motion if you make the motion.
I move that GBOS supports this motion in principle with revisions in the next, before the next meeting.
Okay, I second that.
I'm not, yeah, can I just ask for clarification? I'm not exactly sure what you mean by revisions before the next meeting. Do you mean we accept this in principle and then we generate a final version?
I mean, yes, I mean that because it was suggested that there could be revisions made. I don't know what they are.
The other thing we could do is look at this, discuss it briefly and then postpone decision to next month where we hopefully will have a final version. If it's not time sensitive, I think that's a cleaner process than we have a, a document in front of us. Basically, it's a yes, no on that document.
I agree, it's a more clean process.
If there isn't a rush, I don't get the sense that there is degree of urgency that, I mean, I think it would be good to get it done, but I don't think that the delay to next month is going to have any practical effect. But I'm happy for, people may differ.
Well, I just, I kind of just let, I'm kind of getting a little bit of heat from GHGC on why aren't things moving faster? And so I thought, well, here, fine. And actually, I was really impressed with this draft. Thank you. Thank you, because it was not in me today. So I don't, I'd be curious on like if there are things that jump out to the board of things that we would for sure want to change. But otherwise, I kind of like the diplomacy of saying, okay, GHGC, you said you want that. Here you go. Double check it. And, and by being that we go. So I guess, I guess it puts, feels to me like we're willing to be proactive and click about it, that we still have this, this room to finesse and also to get back to the committee that's done a whole lot of work on this parcel. Considering it, actually hold it yet and put a lot of man hours into envisioning what could happen here. So it'd be really exciting to be able to move forward with. So I, I think that there, in that sense, I think there is a little bit of a other one month this way or that way is going to make that much difference on this project. It's a long-term project. But I think GHGC would like to be able to.
And would, my other question would be, would Mike and Jennifer work on this since your names are on it to revise it for next month?
Well, I think the suggestion is we don't revise it for next month. We, we, I agree with this in principle and any other changes we discuss now. Produce the final version and basically share that with everyone. And then again, we'll start a twenty-four hour timer. And if nobody objects, it then becomes official.
Oh, I understood that a little differently. Sorry, what were you going to say?
So this resolution has not been in front of the Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee, correct?
No, they've asked us to generate this.
They've asked us to generate this. So we, we do have Chair of Housing and Economic Committee on now. And it would be interesting to, to hear from Crystal if this meets the, the vision and the intent from Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee. And we could act on it tonight.
Through the Chair, this is Crystal Hope, Co-Chair of GHGC. I would say that in reading this resolution, I'm in support of it. We did pass at GHGC, basically a request for Kyle to submit an application to HLV, I believe is what it was. And then was told like this should go through GBOS. So this is following what we were told is supposed to be the next step. I think that once this passes, Kyle could formally submit an application. There is a very good example as of today on HLV's agenda for the application that Anchorage Economic Development Authority submitted for their RV park proposal downtown. So anyway, I personally, I would be happy to see the support and movement on this because if you look back at our minutes of GHGC, this has been discussed for many, many months, if not over a year. So personally, I would be excited to see something move on it so that action could go from there. And of course, this will take multiple steps. This will still need to go through HLV. But what we do need to do is get it through the Girdwood process. Thanks.
Sorry. And yeah, thank you for that reminder, Crystal, that this has been on the books for a while. And then also we have discussed this in various forums quite a bit because we discussed it as part of the work plan too. So we've already, we're already kind of approved this. This seems to me like just a matter of if there's any wording that needs to be tweaked. And so I had to understand the process differently than what you explained, Mike, but I think her explanation is better than what I envisioned. So, yeah, so I continue to support the motion as I now understand it.
This is Brianna. As the mover, I would return very send my mission, my move, motion saying that we wait till next month, but to support this tonight. And if there's any edits, it could be done in the next twenty-four hours. I have a tiny one, but it's extremely.
Would you like to go ahead and mention your amendment or adjustment to the language?
It would say nineteenth day of May. Just a T A. Really tiny.
Okay.
That's not really.
That's scriveness, Eric.
Yes.
That doesn't, that doesn't. The, the one thing I think we could, we could probably do is given that the work plan is, HLV work plan is from the assembly tomorrow, we could probably just update the language based on whether there are any changes or not changes and just say approved. That's all I'd suggest. And we can do that, you know, Wednesday.
Okay.
So I would just update the last whereas to clarify the status of the. And then we can confer that this parcel is mentioned and is consistent.
I'm fine.
Sounds great.
Yeah. Current that way.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I am, I am really in favor of some, some action from, from the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Margaret, for working on it.
Thank you.
Yep. So, so to clarify then, I think what we're, what we're voting on is to approve this letter subject to one scriveness, correct, one scriveness correction. And then to update the language on the last whereas after assembly action tomorrow, the HLV work, just to reflect the status. Jennifer and I will agree on a revised wording of this. We will send it to Margaret. Margaret will then send it to all the supervisors and we will consider it passed. But there is an opportunity then to, if you vote in favor, I think, of, of accepting the, except of passing this letter, then there is an opportunity to, to bring that back next month if you disagree with the contents. Okay. At that point, I think we'll go forward and just do a roll call vote.
Okay, sounds great. Rihanna Sullivan. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Passes four zero.
Excellent. Hey, thank you, thank you, everyone. And we're gonna now move on to item number nine, uh, planning case twenty twenty-five, uh, zero four, administrative site plan review for pavilion construction at Lions Club Park. Would like to go ahead with this, right?
I am. The, um, this resolution from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, I, I might defer to, uh, to staff or further clarification on the, um, on the about not to exceed, this is coming out of the, um, land water conservation grant that we've, that is detailed. Is this?
So what this is, is just an administrative review. It's not a public hearing.
Oh.
And this is just to set the wheels in motion to allow us to do what we have been discussing for quite some time and that has had very broad community support and a lot of action from the part of the Girdwood Lions Club.
Right.
So the plan is to build a pavilion. We have previously passed resolutions that had to do with securing the funding through Land and Water Conservation Fund. So this is not so much about money as, um, allowing for the structure to go. And so the resolution that was drafted, again, is pretty brief, just addressing the planning case before it goes to the director. And stating that approval of the site plan will allow the service area to go forward with the planned construction that we've been working toward for quite some time. So this is not new and it's still not okay that it's the nineteenth day of May, but apparently I used the same letter to draft this, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
So this is not, just to confirm, this is not allocating any more money to the project than we
Doesn't have anything to do.
That we have already done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Guess I was confused as I was reading on the, um, on the, on the grant status in the, in the reports.
Good.
Okay. With title, like I think we needed A or a between build pavilion on the second whereas the effort to build.
Oh, yeah.
That looks great.
Okay, any further comments? And we're getting through business tonight. I think unless, unless there are any comments from the public, seeing any comments from the public, so let's do a roll call vote, please.
Did we, we, we have a motion?
Oh, we don't have a motion, actually. No, sorry. You're right. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors support this resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh seven.
Second.
Now we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing any, let's move on to a vote, a roll call vote, please.
Sounds good. Brianna?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero and that one is, has written with.
Thank you. Two resolutions through. We'll now move on to item number ten, uh, which is under all business, we can act tonight. This would, it would be helpful if Kyle was available. He said he would be available, uh, at some later this evening, uh, not now. So I would suggest, even though it's an item under all business, perhaps we can move on to the rest of the items and come back to this, just to give Kyle the opportunity to, um, to join us if he's able to. Probably, probably depends on how many innings that currently, the, uh, Little League game is going.
Do we need a motion for that or can we just do it?
I think we can just, I, I think if we, by consent, yeah, if nobody objects. Okay, great. So, um, so we will hold item number ten until a little later. Let's move on to item eleven. We're now in new business, we're not acting on these. Uh, PSAC recommendation for GBOS resolution support through the extension for the Girdwood Police Service Contract with Whittier, uh, between MOA and Whittier, uh, including an increase in dispatch services, total cost of NTE of nine twenty-five billion. I don't think we have any paperwork for this. What takes, um, any initial comments or thoughts or things that you'd like to see before decision next month? Or potential action next month?
I would remind you that the contract is available to see online on the public safety page. Public safety has met twice and discussed this.
Can you remind me what the contract price was this year?
I can. But it'll take this.
My recollection is around seven eighty-ish.
That's my understanding that, that this increases is almost entirely from the, uh, communication setup, correct?
That's what I thought from the last.
No, there's an increase because we are at the end of our original contract cycle and this is an extension of the contract cycle. So there was a bump up that was negotiated at the time that this contract was initiated. So it was twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, so three years. And then there's this two-year contract extension at a higher rate. So the period before is seven hundred ninety-three, forty-four. Throughout the, and I don't know, Chief Ashay, are you still online? I think not. Um, in the period that we've had this contract, there has already been another shift in the dispatch services, which you may recall. And because we were under contract, they were, uh, Whittier was obligated to cover any increase in those costs. So they have handled all of those costs. And now the switch over, um, to Valdez is something that will be shared.
Gotcha.
Um, under this agreement. So, um, it kind of even things, evens things out again. So I would encourage everyone, this is new business. I would encourage everyone familiarize yourselves with the original police contract. And as I said, this is a, a two-year extension at the price that is negotiated. And then we will be at a new contracting phase.
I think the, um, the question I would have is section four B says that the two-year extension would be eight hundred fifty-six thousand. So I'm not clear why this is nine twenty-five.
Because of the increase in dispatch services.
An extra seventy-five thousand.
Correct, correct.
Okay. I don't regard, I'll have to look through the contract. I don't recall how that was addressed.
Yeah, well, and I would encourage you also to take a look at the public safety minutes. And realize that I probably, um, rounded up a little as well.
Okay. So we're not acting on that tonight, mostly for information and to make people aware of it. What's the, do we have a deadline for action this?
Well, the contract needs to be signed by all of the bodies and needs to be in place by December thirty-first.
Okay.
So, yes, there is some urgency, but, um, I think we're well within where we should be.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, if there's no further discussion on that item, we'll move on to, uh, number twelve, uh, transit supported development. So LUC didn't act on this at our last meeting. Their last meeting, so, um, I think there are two, this is a, um, this is an idea which has been bouncing around, um, and would apply, bouncing around for a while. It would apply primarily to, um, to Anchorage Bowl, but also potentially to, uh, to Geckigal River. I think one question is, we as a body, are we interested in supporting, uh, development ideas that do not apply to Girdwood? And then there is a second question of are they good ideas in here we can steal and perhaps apply to Girdwood in the future? Um, I think that second question is a great question for, um, GHCC to address. So when we discuss it, perhaps next month, um, we could actually formally, formally ask that question or we can do it informally at any point. And the second part to this is I believe there is actually going to be an ordinance probably in the next month or two, uh, being introduced to do this anyway. So at that point, it changes status and it can be, it's an ordinance we can actually see. So rather than a concept and some ideas, it's a particular piece of code. And I think at that point, we can, uh, we can definitely weigh in if we choose to. Um, so there isn't really any action on this now. Again, it's more for awareness and, uh, just to think about how we deal with these types of issues in the future. I think splitting into two parts of, you know, do we, do we want to make a, do we want to take a position even though it doesn't apply to Girdwood? And then secondly, what can we, what, what elements do we like to potentially push forward and make apply to Girdwood? It's, um, Girdwood naturally has sort of developed in a way that's somewhat similar, uh, to the, to, um, the principles behind transit supported development. We have that partly because we're a relatively small, compact place and we've emphasized walkability. And that's not something that typically happens in more suburban sprawl type neighborhoods. So this would be adopting a set of policies to encourage the type of development we naturally see. So there may still be aspects of this which would be, which would be helpful to us in the future. I think that's a technical question that again, GHCC can. But there's no particular action tonight. Got it?
Yeah, I would say that, you know, some parts of our, um, Girdwood Trails Plan certainly incorporate, these concepts as far as walkable neighborhoods and alternative forms of transportation. But I think we, we have kind of dealt with a little bit of it superficially like that. And, um, and then speaking for myself, I just, I just don't know if I've got bandwidth to think about what, um, what we can steal from, from a plan to, to apply to Girdwood. I, I mean, there, there certainly, you know, as you can, as you can imagine, I'm interested in seeing what we can do to, you know, improve alternative transportation of Girdwood. You know, we just have bikes appear when, happen these meetings. But, yeah, I don't, I don't feel like I've got a tremendous amount of bandwidth to, to look into it.
I think that's the idea where the second part we, we prefer to committee. But, Jennifer?
Well, I, I like to do that, um, I like the idea of referring it to committee because that's using our committees, which is what the parliamentary procedure of training was telling us to do. These committees, and I, I do like the idea of stealing ideas. I, I also want to build on your idea though of bandwidth and what we have bandwidth for. And I think also in terms of time and both of us, uh, uh, sorry, all of us have both, uh, uh, kind of a knowledge-based bandwidth limitations and also time. So I am hesitant to wade into this kind of thing in the absence of pressure from any of the, or a request from any of the other community councils to. So I see the, the, uh, if, if, if we had community councils reaching out to us saying, please, support this or whatever, I think that would be kind of a different thing, but just, um, wading in unbidden into something that at this stage of the game doesn't, doesn't affect us, um, feels, feels like, um, adding one thing to both our, yeah, to our mental bandwidth and our meeting time that we don't need to do. Uh, but that, that's just me, but I really do like the idea of stealing whatever we can. Sorry.
I have a question on, it does sound familiar either because it was that lady's or maybe Anna Brawley was talking about this. I didn't, but would it be an ordinance as early as?
Potentially. I think maybe introduction if you like.
Could be, needs to all.
Okay. So I guess we could, typically we wouldn't take action if we're going to refer it. Do that informally, this request. We could decide to do that as a body, um, so not take it up as an item ourselves, but, uh, refer it to committee. Cause that's not, I would say that probably falls under the principles or something as new business. So it's kind of, we're introducing it and we're saying, let's consider it further. So I would entertain a motion to, um, to basically pose the question to GHCC of are there elements within transit supported development concept, um, that would be beneficial to Girdwood? And we can pose that question.
I, uh, so moved on that motion after hearing from the body so far.
I will second to have a question.
Can, can you restate the motion, please?
To ask GHCC to look at this document and see what would work in the Girdwood community.
Yes, see if there are any recommendations for policies we should adopt.
Recommendations for adoption.
Then I have a question about that for me. I, I'm just curious if it makes more sense to have them look at it once it's an actual ordinance? Or does it make sense to look at the, this, you know, in principle now?
From a timing point of view, I'll attempt to answer that. From a timing point of view, it might make more sense to start looking at it now and then maybe when they make final decisions, they'll be able. If there is a risk because the ordinance process is introduced, adoption and potential hearing and decision two weeks later, um, that doesn't work very well with our monthly meetings where we introduce something one month and discuss it a month later. So given the general scope, it might make sense from the start of the year, this now. But the idea is we would ask the question, not mandate it.
I, I recall, maybe it was at the April meeting that, um, GHCC kind of brushed over this, uh, this topic if I'm not mistaken.
Don't recall.
Was it?
I don't recall, I think LUC did. LUC.
The LUC, yeah. And at the time, I think some of the comments from the community that, that were reflective of, uh, also GHCC were, were not in, in very much, very, uh, there wasn't really any support to take, to take this up. And so, um, I, the wording of our passing this on to GHCC, um, you know, I, I don't know that we can compel them to take a look at it or anything like that. They didn't seem very interested in, um, in, in considering it. And again, um, bandwidth on, um, on what these guys are, on what this committee is, is trying to do. I think that they've got a, a pretty full plate. And, um, I'd, I'd be interested, I'd be interested to, since we have a co-chair on right now, I'd be interested to hear if, um, if she has any, um, thoughts on this.
In my recollection of the discussion at LUC was it was about, do we support this as a concept? And that's a different question to, do we, can we cannibalize it and steal the good parts? It's a, do we want to, do we want to buy the vehicle or support the purchase of the vehicle is quite different to do. Do we see any spare parts we can make use of? If you like, use a poor analogy, but I think the question is a good one for Crystal. If you, uh, if you caught that discussion, Crystal?
I did, yeah, through the chair, this is Crystal. I was listening to the assembly meeting when this was getting discussed several months back. And, you know, they were making amendments to add different areas of town to be considered, um, transportation corridors. And I, I was thinking in my mind, gee, I, I think that the reason why they were doing that is because they believed, believed that there was potential grant money that could come in to fund in these corridors. And I was thinking if that's possible for Girdwood, I don't know why we wouldn't want to, um, do that. But it is possible that we want to have our own plan. And that might be like the stealing of the best parts and putting together our own thing. But if, I, I need to take a closer look at this, um, to determine if maybe we should just jump into it because, um, it might be that they did all the legwork for us and we just have, we add on a little section for Girdwood. So this is something that I am interested in looking forward because of course the Ruane and Aliaska Highway would be a perfect candidate for a transportation corridor. So thanks.
Thanks, Crystal.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Crystal, so you don't, you don't see any issues or, or you would be in favor of uh GBOS asking GHGC to take a peek at this and see if it's, see if we should.
I would.
Mind it for ideas. Okay.
I, I, I do think that we should, yeah, I think that I, I have not had the capacity lately to, to take a look at it like it probably deserves. So I do want to understand it a little bit better and also consider if we should, you know, create our own versus add on to what's happening here. But it does seem like a missed opportunity if there's going to be grant money available for that and um especially if I had, I don't know, it's not going to have anything to do with transportation anchorage, but certainly transportation around Girdwood is the easiest when you can just access straight off the Valley Eska Highway.
I, I got a little confused because I think similar to you, I couldn't remember whether it had been discussed at GHGC or LUC, but it was LUC. Uh, I would concur with this um assessment that it was, it was about a slightly different question in relation to this. So I, I just, just skimmed the GHGC minutes, I didn't see it in there.
No. I'm just, we business, so we can't act, but we could still suggest that be on the agenda. But it says all, LUC recommendation.
Yeah, I think LUC have basically said they're not, they're not interested in acting on this, but it doesn't. So I, I think I, I'll question here is perhaps that makes sense as um, you know, we're not, LUC hasn't made, had taken a position on the concept. There isn't currently an ordinance. Um, we can still ask GCHC to take a look at it. And I think we can do that as a, uh, if somebody wants to make that as a motion, we'll go through the formal process of doing it.
I'm, I don't, I don't consider that a, sorry, I don't, and then I'll follow up. I will make that motion.
I'm sorry.
The, the motion is that uh we uh request that GHGC take a look at this transit related development and see if there are any ideas within it that would be applicable or um advisable for Girdwood.
Okay, so I think you already had that motion on the table.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, and I think it was moved by Brianna and seconded by you.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, I was confused. So I think if you're ready to move on, I think you might.
Are you further discussing on this?
Yeah, I want to say one thing about this, this doesn't feel to me like the same thing as like making as, this doesn't feel like a decision. This is a policy decision, this is a kind of a parliamentary, this belongs back in committee first. Is uh how I interpret this, I don't, I know we're careful, we're trying to be careful about being careful about new business and old business, but I, I think this falls within because it's, feels parliamentary to me. We're not rushing it forward, we're actually moving it back.
Yeah, effectively. I agree. Um, I'll do this by consent, I think, keep it informal. Any objection to passing that motion? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number thirteen, item agenda LUC two five oh five dash zero four, marijuana license fee renewals twenty twenty five. So again, really for awareness.
This is mainly administrative, yes, if uh we have not heard any comments uh about the um extension of the marijuana license. Um, and so similar to the alcohol licenses, what we do is um if we have heard nothing, then obviously we're not writing a resolution challenging it. Um, and then the next step in the process will be to present a letter of non-objection so that that's ready to go for uh when it's needed. So um that's where we appear to be so far. But if anybody has any comments that they want to make, it is time to make them.
Crystal?
Uh, I just want to, I should have done this at public comment, but I just wanted to give everybody an update that Little Bears is um in position to receive that two hundred thousand of marijuana tax money. So personally, I am extremely grateful that marijuana is contributing to that tax and I'm grateful for the business that um is bringing that back to our community. So I, I personally think they're a good neighbor and I'm grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, there's no action here, so we can, we'll make a decision next month. Um, we want to item number fourteen, uh planning and zoning case, planning and zoning commission case, uh twenty twenty five zero four five. Um, which allows flexibility for development of modular mobile planning units and manufactured home parks um in the bowl and Chugak Eagle River and downtown and not Girdwood. So this is a, um, another example of something that's going through planning process, which does not apply in Girdwood. And um, I guess the question for us is um, I don't know, personally, I don't know why it doesn't apply in Girdwood, it's just um, I haven't heard anything about this until I saw this coming through. Um, so it's again a question of is there any, perhaps we could do the same thing, refer it and say, is there any, is there any benefit here? Um, well, actually, one thing we could do is find out from planning why explicitly it doesn't include Girdwood. Um, and then uh, and then the question is, is there anything here which is valuable and useful? So this does, I think it's partly directed at so-called trailer parks. Um, but it's also, it broadens some definitions, I believe, and applies to sort of prefabricated tiny homes and some other things. So this, at least how it's being discussed, opens up options for tiny homes, but it does not include Girdwood. So um, I think this is a, an interesting example and something we should look at as a community.
GHGC because they're first, they're asking for feedback, right, by the ninth, and we don't have a meeting.
There is a planning and hearing, planning and zoning hearing on that, yes. So we could take some action and actually make a formal position or we can, since this is a code change, it still has to go to assembly.
For underneath the community council's list here. You know, it doesn't apply.
Sorry, I missed the.
It, it says GBOS underneath the community councils, even though it doesn't supposedly affect us.
I think that's just routing.
Yeah, that's a routing issue.
Oh.
That's to all committee councils, I think that's all. It includes Portage Valley, which has not met for at least fifteen years. Yeah, if there, no, is there any other questions here?
Uh, not a question yet, but I do support the idea that we, we take some kind of action.
Crystal?
I just want to say, I'm sorry that I have a lot to say tonight, uh, but I also want to say that I'm really in support of policies that allow tiny homes and um prefabbed um homes and cabins. I think that this is definitely a pathway towards affordability. Um, I think that I, I, again, I would like to add on and, and have Girdwood as part of this because I think we have learned our lesson, how long it takes to get anything through planning. So if we just, you know, agree and ask for maybe even a, a certain zoning type, like it looks like they've done here where they're asking for this in R five. Um, maybe we say um GC five, which would be South Townsite, which is where we were proposing those small cabins. Um, something to get allowable use in Girdwood somewhere. And then, I mean, and to have all of this be moved through committee or through a co, um, a um consultant, you know, takes tons of thousands of dollars. And so I feel like this could be a missed opportunity if we don't say what we want um and maybe even put a place uh for it. So it's, it's not very vague, it's actually pretty specific if we use the zoning type. That's my comment, thanks.
I have a question specific for, to manage Girdwood. And whether or not there is, do you see any aspect of this that is counter indicated by the comprehensive plan?
The opposite, there's one of the implementation, uh, one of the goals actually is to allow more flexibility in different types of construction, including tiny homes. So it's to encourage this kind of development. So whether it, um, I haven't done a detailed analysis of exactly what's included in this ordinance, I've read it roughly, but I haven't sat down for a couple of hours with a strong coffee. Um, so I'm not a hundred percent sure if it does meet all of our requirements, but it definitely seems aligned with the comprehensive plan.
So then I have a follow-up question to that, which is that would it be appropriate that we send this to GHGC as well and say, please look at this a little bit in depth and then find out if we do in fact want to pursue it a little more aggressively as Crystal was suggesting.
But I agree with Crystal's comments that it's, uh, if this is something which would benefit us, either in the form it is or of a slight tweak, then there's a great opportunity to sort of jump onto this now. Yes, my guess, I haven't got an answer from planning, I haven't asked them yet. But my guess of why this doesn't apply to Girdwood is historically there was a lot of objection to uh mobile, uh, mobile home parks in Girdwood and they're banned in Girdwood, although obviously they exist. Um, so I suspect it was, uh, let's not, let's not rattle the, rattle the natives uh without actually any real discussion being had.
I, I would like to point out though that we, we do have a, a mobile home park here in Girdwood. And there's probably fifty or sixty people that are, are living in it. And um, who knows what kind of pressure is going to come onto that mobile home park in, in the next decade or so. And um, looking out for, you know, these affordable places to live right now. Because we, we've all expressed an interest to look out for, for that. And um, so I, I definitely think that we need to keep either be included in the conversation or have a, a way to, to comment on it. And then just going to ask it straight up, what is R five district?
So um, there are a slight clarification on that, this, this ordinance as written does two basic things. It's, um, it opens up the option of um types of mobile housing units pretty much everywhere, all residential districts. But then a specific concentration in development of uh mobile housing is limited to uh the R five district. So if you're going to have an equivalent, you know, park, it would be R five. But for individual, you know, housing on individual residential properties, that's pretty much allowed anywhere within the ball and Eagle River at the lead. Um, so we have, again, while we maybe have one park, we have many um housing units that already fit within this.
Yeah.
Definition that technically are not legal, um, but exist here now. So, uh, since they're not, since they don't fall under code, there's some complacency of funding them and doing various other things. So, yeah, again, this is something where I think I can see, I can potentially see some significant value. And it surprises me that the conversation has happened without, without us being at all.
Does it though?
Yes, it does.
Is, I mean, is there any other place within the municipality that is um, that is left off of this list?
Um, not really, I mean, there are, there are three special areas of zoning. Uh, Chugak Eagle River, which is in chapter ten. Um, go to chapter nine, downtown, chapter eleven, ten, eleven are included. So it's only chapter nine where it's excluded.
My question.
Um, not to jump in where I don't belong, but I'm wondering if maybe the action from GBOS could be to ask to have this postponed a little bit so that the community could consider it. Um, I'm keenly aware that Girdwood has been very vocal about being swept up in other action, whether on purpose or not. And so I think this is, you know, it's not intended to put people off that Girdwood isn't included in this, I don't think. Um, and having, I think my very first GBOS meeting and LUC meeting cycle ever had to do with a mobile home park and it was unfavorable and there were a lot of people here. So, you know, maybe things have changed enough that that same thing wouldn't happen. But, you know, I think, I think the issue to me seems to be that we don't know enough about this right now to know what the impact would be to Girdwood. So, uh, I guess, looking at the hearing date, perhaps a comment from the community is, we might be interested in this, but we want to understand it more.
I would say, yeah, I mean, sorry, I'm not going, uh, um, yeah, I think to me, I, I'm, I'm not clear why it does not address, it's not addressed as a change title night, so a chapter nine. So I think it's a, it's a good question for planning. Um, you know, why Girdwood's out of the scope, outside scope may have good reasons. It's probably a good issue to bring up to the planning and zoning commission when they consider it. Not necessarily a request that we're included, but just an understanding of why we're not and whether there are aspects here that could be beneficial. We have the opportunity, once it's gone through planning zoning, we do have, uh, this will be a change that the assembly would enact. So there is an opportunity for us to wade in at that point, process, when it comes up to the assembly. And that may be from a timing perspective, that might be the better path, because I don't think we're going to get the delay.
Right.
We can just acknowledge that this might be interesting, we haven't been part of the conversation, there may be good reasons for that, but.
Well, I guess I'm trying to figure out how we do something before June ninth, is that something that individuals want to comment on then?
Good suggestion.
Well, I'd also really like to see this go to GHGC. We're like another request to GHGC. Sorry, Crystal, if you're still on it, we're adding to your workload here. Um, but you did mention an interest and I, I would like to know more about this, but I also trust the um incredible knowledge base that we have on GHGC. So I'd very much like to know what GH thinks about it.
So that sounded like an, almost a motion to refer it.
Uh, yes, I guess, I would like to pick a motion if we prefer this to GHGC.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion or should we just make a decision on that? Not seeing any further discussions, so again, we'll do this by assent. Any objections? No, okay, we'll refer that as well. So there'll be a, there'll be a polite request coming your way, Crystal.
Pretty please, cheers, I'm glad.
And, and Brad, when he's listening to this in the future. Um, okay.
Oh, we're getting a thumbs up.
So we have item fifteen and then ten.
Yes, then Kyle has joined us.
So let's, uh, let's move back to uh item ten then, if nobody minds. Um, and I'll let Kyle take this. So we're on, we're now on the request for capital funding, the additional capital funding of a hundred twenty five thousand for the Davos, Davos Fish Colvert to relocate the Instar gas line.
Hey, this is Kyle, thanks for uh delaying this in the meeting and uh happy to report the Girdwood Giants are three and O. So uh, they're, they're doing well. Um, so uh, through the process of getting this project going with the contractor, um, we discovered that we have a six inch high pressure gas line that is sitting on top of the colbert that we want to replace. And um, with that, the uh, um, you know, the, the only option really is to bury the gas line below the creek. Um, and get it out of the way. And so um, we were hoping that this, something like this would have been caught earlier, but it wasn't. And um, so we did meet with Instar and Instar has been very accommodating to say, hey, we can make this happen. Um, but the price, they don't know the full on, but they gave us a rough estimate of about a hundred to a hundred and twenty five thousand to lower it. And so what they're going to do is bring in a directional driller and bury the line twenty feet deep. So it'll be below everything, all the utilities and the creek and well out of the way. Um, which is, which is a positive because it won't be a conflict with that crossing anymore. And uh, you know, future construction, it will never conflict. Um, and so uh, the, the costs will be refined once we get them going on their engineering. And uh, we've already used part of our contingency funds to start that engineering, it was a five thousand dollar fee. And uh, to get the engineers going on it and then it will go there. But what I requested the board is to encumber a hundred and twenty five thousand out of our capital fund. And then once we get the refined costs, um, we'll probably be below that. Um, and then use that, those funds to get that line buried. Uh, this will need to happen before we can start the project and the project right now is slated to start uh at the end of, or right after fourth July, after Forest Fair really, and be done, we have to be out of the water by the thirty first um because of fish passage. So um, they would do this project at the end of June and uh take about three days to change the line over. This six inch pressure, high pressure line feeds Aliaska and so it's vital. Um, we talked about alternatives of trying to see if we could keep it in the same place, but um, from a safety perspective, both with construction and the long term, it makes better sense to bury it. So uh, that is the request and uh, that's what we're asking from the board tonight is to encumber those funds for that, for that project.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? I will start. This is a pre, I'm preempting the discussion we're having tomorrow. But are there any, were there any unpleasant surprises when it came to twenty twenty four or did we end up with a positive fund balance?
Oh, we ended up with a positive fund balance for, for several reasons, but mostly, you know, with the lighter fall. We didn't use as much snow removal money. So we ended up with there. And it shows us having, because we didn't make any payments on the engine, but that is sitting against our undesignated account right now. So a lot of that, that positive or that positive revenue from twenty four will go towards paying down that engine that still hasn't been produced yet, but it has been paid for.
Okay, so would this come from the, from the undesignated fund or would it come from the reserves in roads and drainage?
It would come from the reserves in roads and drainage. We just moved over three hundred thousand, which was the contribution for this year. So we'd be pulling from that to pay for this.
Okay, thank you. So entertain a motion to, to encumber up to one hundred twenty five thousand to relocate the high-pressure gas line at the Davos Fish Colvert, coming from the roads and drainage capital funds.
Some.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Kyle, for the description and all the details.
No problem.
An unpleasant surprise, but I guess better than rupturing the gas line.
Yes.
If there's no further comments, then let's move to a roll call vote.
Good. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Or is Arrow Motion passes?
Thank you.
I'm going to step off unless you had anything else for tonight.
No, that's it, I think. Unless there were any other questions from earlier. Okay. Thank you very much, Val.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Enjoy the celebrations.
Will do. Thanks.
Okay, so we can move on to our last item, item fifteen, bed tax allocation Girdwood. This is.
The radio.
Okay, so we are recording. We're back on the record. There was just a, a technical error then when Kyle left. I think we were logged in as Kyle, so the meeting finished. Okay. We just have one last item, which is bed tax allocation Girdwood. This is again introduction. We'll discuss it more extensively next month. This is really to take a formal action to request the allocation of as much as we can get from the bed tax, which is collected from short-term rentals in Girdwood to mitigate the impact of housing, of short-term rentals in Girdwood. So we will have a, next month, we will have at least a draft resolution for this, which I'm working on. It may take more than that before we are comfortable with it, but we will have something to discuss next month.
May I ask one question?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I gather that there is reason to believe there is flexibility. Originally, this idea was somewhat stalled out because of what was viewed as the rigidity of the bond requirements, which was connected. And so I, I'm sure that as part of the discussion next week or the next meeting, we'll talk about why that is not necessarily the case anymore, right?
Yeah, we can go into gory details.
Okay, excellent.
It was last year, a lot of the additional requirements. So basically, long story short, when the, when the extra four percent was charged, bed tax used to be eight percent. It was increased to twelve with the intention of this extra four percent went to visitors, visitor centering, went to pay for a visitor center in downtown Anchorage. There was concern that bed tax wouldn't cover that. So there were additional things put into the contracts and to the bond issuing to take more than the four percent for a number of years. And there was a, there was a triggering condition said when the, when the annual receipts from bed tax were high enough, like probably, I think seventy-five percent more than you would need for, to pay, to pay off the bonds, then that requirement went away. And that was met last year, or actually had to happen two years in a row. And it was met twenty-two, twenty-three, so twenty-four, they no longer had to pay those payments. So it frees up a chunk of money, which is always going to the reserves for convention center. And the reserves in the convention center are like, you know, over a hundred million. So what it does mean is there are many people in the assembly administration who have seen this money and think we can grab this. So there's a, there is kind of a broader discussion happening this year about how bed tax gets allocated and we want to strike early. There is also renegotiation of the visit Anchorage contract happening this year. They also receive quite a lot of money. It's going.
I guess I'm wondering if this is specifically tied to short-term rental-generated funds or whether this is bed tax over.
There's several aspects to this. I think we can make, I think the strongest argument, personally, I think the strongest argument is for short-term rentals, where there is a direct nexus between basically the amount of activity there is in that market and the impact it has on local housing within Girdwood itself. There are other arguments about how the money could be used more broadly, which includes other sources of bed tax other than the short-term rental market. But I think we have, we have several related discussions.
Right, right. Well, I just see that we have other impacts as well besides housing, obviously, that's the most critical.
Yes.
If, if there is an opportunity, seems like abroad is good.
The majority of communities who have control over their own funding and have a bed tax for short-term rental to use it for some combination of mitigation of housing and other infrastructure issues. So that's typically what's done in other resort-like communities.
I mean, it sounds like the question is, why are we limiting it to S T R? And it is a good question, given the impact here also of the hotels workforce on our housing. And so that is an interesting discussion. And it is just a thought. We could consider referring the question to G H E C. I would like to see G H E C discuss this. Well, Kristen's probably rolling her eyes at me by now. But we've been talking about the bed tax a lot. And I think if nothing else, G H E C should be up to speed on this as much as we are. So I think I'd like to make a wish that we ask G H E C to add this to their agenda.
Your second?
Okay.
Not here.
That gives me one.
I believe they have discussed this, the separations. So I think they are up to speed. They have, obviously, they have specific.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, I think they even wrote a resolution on it.
All right, okay. All right, no, I guess I knew that, which is curious if they're up to speed on particularly this bond business. I know Matt Schechter dove into this pretty deeply. I haven't heard him present to G H E C recently and they've had a little bit of turnover. But anyway, that's my here, here or there.
I think the bond issue has kind of been resolved. That was resolved by the formal decision last year that those special conditions had been met.
All right.
And it's no longer required to get the so-called formal process. Yeah, there is this broader discussion happening about this and other sources of revenue. So and I think part of that was spurred by the whole discussion of sales tax last year.
Okay.
Right.
I mean, I would, I would almost suggest that this could be a, an agenda item for a joint meeting of G B O S and Girdwood Economic Committee. Down there. And do, because this is a, this, this could be a, this, a real game changer for our ability to mitigate impacts of, of short-term rentals in our, in our community as we move forward with projects, whether it's out on Rand Road or elsewhere in the valley, how we're going to, you know, kind of what we can count on for funds and, and how we speak as a community on the use of these funds.
We could definitely consider a, a joint meeting in the future.
Yeah.
So I think the, the main topic tonight is just again to introduce this and to have, we should, we will have something on our agenda next month, if we want to, sorry about that. If we want to schedule a joint meeting, are you suggesting we do it as soon as next month or would that be afterwards? Okay, so perhaps we can.
Kind of dark and rainy, like let's think about September.
Okay. Well, hopefully by then we'll have already made a formal decision because I think that the discussion is going to lose lock. There is even, I've heard people discussing even having ballot question in next, next April for how this money gets spent.
That may come into play if we ever actually don't money.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's that.
There's some other related questions about it. Any other, any other questions on that? If not, we will, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. And thank you for those who found their way back.
Yeah.
It's still day, like.
Although non-update, beginning.
Eight forty.